This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance, that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm losing my voice. My husband is happy, but it probably doesn't bode well for a council meeting, but we'll get through this. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
Do have a quorum or a majority? We have several requests to amend the agenda. The first is to remove the minutes of March 12, 2019. They're not ready for distribution yet. We would like to add, under introductory readings of ordinances, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the detailed financial recovery plan. We would also like to add two communications, one from Tim Maloney about the monthly reports for January and February, and then another communication from Chuck Barlow regarding earnings tax reports for January and February. Then we'd like to move Mr. Moore's letter regarding the ESID project to next on the agenda. Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, I recommend that the changes and amendments to the agenda be approved as stated.
A second by Mr. Breeden. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. There was a letter distributed from the auditor, and I just wanted to know, was that for information purposes, or was that to be...
Mr. Stiff, that's for information only?
Which...
About the credit card.
That was just a...
Just information only?
Correct. That was just a carbon copy to council, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And you know what? Mr. Sancker, can you include in your motion, we should move the executive session letter to be last, so we're not...
So move, Madam President.
And, Mr. Breeden, you will accept that in your second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for reminding me. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to amend the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Our next order of business then is the letter from Keith Moore regarding the ESID project.
Dear council members, I was contacted recently by Chris Jones, Director of PACE Financing for the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance. He informed me that in the near future, the Norwood SID Board will be sending council a proposed energy special improvement ESID project. Under the ESID program, a property owner is able to finance energy efficient projects through loans that are paid from a special property assessment placed on the property by council and paid by the owner along with their property taxes. I am requesting that council allow Mr. Jones to explain the upcoming proposed project to council and answer any questions council may have about the project or the ESID process. My hope is that by providing background information now, we can move the actual approval process through more quickly once legislation is ready to be presented to council. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Norwood Law Director.
It's your pleasure. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to receive and file the letter and invite Mr. Jones up to address this on the floor.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Jones, come forward. Can you come up to the microphone so folks at home can hear you?
Oh, good evening. Again, my name is Chris Jones. I'm with the Greater Cincinnati Energy Alliance. And so, you know, as Keith said in his memo, wanted to really kind of give, you know, some advance notice that we do have the second project through the Energy SID of Norwood that we anticipate, you know, presenting next month. And, you know, with that, I know we have, you know, some new board members, and just wanted to take the opportunity to explain what the Energy SID is and, you know, really how the commercial property owners of the city can actually utilize PACE financing to their benefit. So, just the, you know, the quick of really what PACE financing is. It is special assessment financing. It allows a property owner to borrow monies. It's all private funds, which then is secured by a special assessment that is levied by the local government. So, obviously, in this case, Norwood. So, you know, as a quick history, the, actually, three office buildings across the street when CDK moved in was the first three properties that did petition to utilize PACE financing. And so, the Energy SID was created at that time. And so, this next project that would be coming, you know, forward here in the next thirty or so days is the Encore Technologies property over on Forest Avenue. The property owner there is in the data server business, and they recently purchased the property back in the fall. They, as I understand it, had been a tenant there for a couple of years approximately, but they did purchase the property, and it looks like they're, you know, continuing to kind of grow their business and have needs for energy efficient improvements, both from a data center standpoint, but also they are putting solar, propose to put solar panels on the roof and do a LED lighting retrofit of the building to save energy. So, that's kind of in a nutshell what, you know, what the ESID and kind of the quick history, and again, who the property owner, you know, that we've been working with here for three or four months, these projects, kind of, it's kind of like cold molasses is the way I explain it. It takes a while for them to, you know, really kind of, so, but, but again, we do think that in the next thirty days is when we would, you know, be calling the ESID meeting. So, you know, kind of in a sequence, the ESID meeting would be called, and then, once the ESID meeting would review the project and approve it, then it would come in front of council for the, you know, letting of the actual assessment. I would just kind of reiterate that, you know, there are no funds at risk of the city. This is all really, you know, essentially a pass-through, you know, the local governments, whether it be in the state of Ohio or any other state, the local governments with PACE obviously have the property taxing authority, and that is what is needed to secure that special assessment repayment back to the private lender. And so, that's, you know, that's the flow.
Out of curiosity, could you, are private homeowners able to do this? I've just recently seen a couple of people put solar panels on the roof, and I was just wondering if that was eligible.
Yeah, so, your timing is good, asking that question. So, the Ohio ESID statute that was passed in twenty, or 2009, had an amendment in 2010, does actually allow for single-family homeowners, but really kind of up until recently, doing PACE on single-family homes is a high volume and kind of a different animal, so to speak. So, and, so with that being said, we do understand that there's like three states in the country where residential PACE is actually being done, California, Florida, and Missouri. And we understand that the entities, there's like two or three entities that are, you know, doing the residential PACE financing in those states, that they are, you know, looking to kind of open for business, you know, here in Ohio by the end of the year. And just kind of quickly, what that would look like is that, you know, if and when that would happen, you know, we would obviously come back because it would have to pass through the ESID, but rather than having to come back, you know, every time like we do here with commercial properties, we would really kind of look to, and when I say "we," legal counsel that we, you know, have utilized for the ESIDS and the PACE financing, the legal document structure has been Bricker and Eckler. And, and so what they would do is they would then actually provide a new plan to the ESID that would have the residential construct kind of to it. So, what would happen there would be, there would be, you know, maybe dozens at a time
Right.
Homes, you know, that would be, you know, kind of coming up and more of kind of a, I think, a consent, you know, approval, as you know, I understand, you know, can be done.
Sure. Thank you.
That's what's been talked about, yes.
Any other questions? Or, Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you so much. So, just for businesses that want to maybe consider this, what's the minimum, like, project size?
Yeah, good question there. So, my, my answer, two or three years ago, when we first started, would have been $300,000, but we now have lowered that to $50,000. Yeah, so, we had a lot of, you know, small businesses coming to us with, you know, like $50,200, $250,000 projects, and at the time, we had to say no, but, but we have actually found a local bank rather than some of the national footprint PACE lenders that we do traditionally work with that can fund in that range. And we hope to really kind of add more as time goes on. But, yeah, but that's, yeah, that's definitely a good, good question there.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you. We look forward to the legislation, Keith.
Mr. Moore, you have any comments?
I guess just from city's administrative and council's aspect is, there is really nothing to do except, okay, we'll approve the property owner raising his own taxes to cover the cost of the money he's borrowing from somebody that we did not line up. That's the, the way this system works is, if a business wants to do this, and hopefully a future in the homeowner, they go to the, to PACE, they say, this is the kind of thing we want to do, and all of the, we're going to find a lender for you, we're going to take a look at the plans and see if it meets the requirements, we're going to, you know, make sure all the numbers work, all of that work is done before it ever goes to the ESID Board on which Norwood has a member, and, and then before it comes to council. So, for us, it's an extremely painless and simple way to offer this financing option for, for local entities.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We appreciate the information. All right. We do have two requests to address council, but they're not on items, on council items, so we'll deal with those a little later. And no reports of standing committees, so we'll move on to third reading of ordinances. And that is an ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale of such property and declaring an emergency as amended. Mr. Thompson?
Move to have the third reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the third reading.
Ordinance declaring certain real property to be surplus and authorizing the sale by auction of such property and declaring an emergency as amended.
Mr. Thompson?
Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
We have a...
I'm sorry. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for the law director through the chair, if I might. Is there any update on the potential vendor for the auctioning of the sites to come present to council?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. I did contact Worley's firm and Penny Worley, and they are, they sent me a revised contract that changes it to an as-is, quick claim deed that deals with a couple of other things, to be honest. I have not studied it, and right off the top, I don't remember the issues, but I took, came from the committee meeting and discussed those with her, and I think we're all on the same page. If council wants to have a meeting, committee, the whole committee wants to have a meeting, just let us know, and she'd be more than happy to come and talk with whoever's interested. If not, then I was intending to have an ordinance authorizing that contract, assuming it's the, that the advertising costs are somehow covered in the fiscal recovery plan and, and budget, but to have that contract come to council at the next regular meeting. But if there's a, a county, committee meeting somebody wants to have, and whether it's yours or Housing Committee, to discuss, sit down and speak with her about the way it's going to run, and some of the language you might want to have on the, you know, on their website when they do it, then by all means, she'd be more than happy to sit down and meet with anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to introductory reading of ordinances, and the first is an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor, would you like to give us an overview prior to our action on this?
Yes. Jim will give you the numbers. It's been worked on for some time. Jim will give you the numbers. He's been working on this several hours. We've been in constant contact with the state financial commission and their supervisors. The way I understand this is that we have to pass this plan, and it must, we can't pass a plan that puts us into debt. So, we have to, we're required to, to pass a plan that does not include our debt. And basically, with this plan, any changes in the plan, anything that happens down the road that will cost us more will have caused the plan to be altered, and it could cause us considerable problems, and that we'll get into later. But now, I'd like to give it to Mr. Stiff, who is, like I said, devoted many hours to putting this plan together, and we, like I said, Donna Lake, myself, Joe Gears, and we've been in constant contact with the financial supervisors for their guidance throughout this process. So, Mr. Stiff.
Mr. Stiff?
Thank you, Madam President. What I'd like to do is walk you through the plan using the assumptions that begin on page four. This gives you basically a written idea of what the assumptions in the plan are that create the numbers that follow, where the numbers for payroll and departmental expenses came from my office. We worked with the Auditor of State, and the Auditor of State created this document. One of the ways, or really, the main way that we did this is, I created my version of what the plan would look like from a number standpoint. The state created theirs, Anna Mary Thomas from the Auditor of State. We met and looked at those two and looked for variances, and seeing which one of us thought something should be higher than lower, and then went back and forth with that until we came up with what we have here. The document you have is the one that was prepared by the Auditor of State. We've had multiple meetings with individuals, including with the mayor, because it is the mayor's plan. This does represent his desire for the city at this point, just put into the numbers. So, starting on page four, if we look at the general fund revenue assumptions, where our revenue comes from, property taxes, we use the 2019, property taxes based on the actual property tax from 2018. The amounts are estimated to remain consistent in 2020 through 2023. Next is income tax. 2019 is based on the city treasurer's estimate for 2019. 2019 is projected slightly lower than 2018. In 2018, we received a one-time flux of income tax from a December 2018 bonus given to company employees. The city treasurer does estimate a modest 1% growth each year for the forecasted period starting in 2020. Next, hotel tax, expected to remain consistent throughout the forecast period. A new hotel was built in the city, was fully operational in 2018. Intergovernmental revenue, revenue in 2018 includes a SAFER grant received from fire department in the amount of $438,500. This grant ended in 2018, and no other SAFER grant monies are forecasted at this time. Charges for services, the largest revenue source is EMS services. Service needs fluctuate, therefore, the amount remains consistent throughout the forecast period. Fees, licenses, and permits, the largest revenue source in this key is the building department fees. In 2018, the building department had large increases in its revenues. This is not projected for future years. Fines and forfeitures, the largest revenue source is traffic fines, which fluctuates monthly, and average was calculated for the forecast period. Page five, investment income, the city invested in Star Ohio starting at the end of 2018, so we are seeing interest income from our bank balances. Other revenue in 2017 and 2018, there was a large amount from a worker's comp rebate. This is not a source of revenue that is reliable, and it was not forecasted for 2019 or future years. Then we move to expenditure, general fund expenditure assumptions, personal services and expenditures. Staffing levels by department are based on information and funding provided by the mayor's city auditor and council. See attachment A, approved as part of the recovery plan. Health insurance, 2018, 2019, and 2020 are based on the April 2019 invoice provided by the insurance carrier. Per agreement with the insurance carrier, there will be no cost increase for 2020 health insurance. 2021 through 2023 projects a 15% increase to healthcare premium rates for all departments. Street section and parks and playground personnel costs, our movements of street and park employees to the appropriate category, as well as movements of employees that were paid from street construction and the water fund in prior years, taking those personnel that have been paid out of other funds, bringing them back to where they belong in the general fund. Step increases are built into the forecast period. The forecast period does not include any base increases. Separation pay, including police and fire department is calculated, and workers' compensation includes a 2% increase for 2020 through 2023. Moving on to page six, other expenditures. 2020 through 2023 includes a 3% increase for contractual services and materials and supplies annually. Capital outlay, council has a draft capital outlay plan. It has been, it has been incorporated into the forecast. These plan items are located within contractual services, materials and supplies, and capital outlay. A new ladder truck for the, and fire engine purchases are included as debt to be entered into for the fire department. Review of the 911 dispatch department. In 2018, a review and evaluation was completed for the city. The city decided to keep the 911 dispatch department. Review of the retirees' healthcare insurance costs. In 2018, council approved an elimination to the retirees' healthcare and C-9 trust. The new program is retirees' benefit program under a non-departmental section of the recovery plan. Review of current employee health insurance cost states the intent of council is to charge employees a portion of the premium cost for health insurance. In 2019, a 2 to 5.5% based on coverage selected by the employee. 2020, the same thing, 2 to 5.5% based on selection. 2021, 15% based on estimated premium increase. 2022, 15% based on estimated increase, and 2023, 15% based on the increase. Next section is movement of street employees from street and water fund. We moved to the general fund under street section, parks and playground department. Moving to page seven, movement of lighting expenses from the street fund to the general fund, movement of lighting expenses from the state highway fund to the general fund, reduction of fire personnel as a result of retirements, and reduction of police personnel, street construction and repair fund actions. The street construction and repair fund was presented as a deficit fund for fiscal emergency analysis due to outstanding encumbrances at the end of 2015 and June of 2016. The actual ending fund balance was not negative for 14 through 16. The fund balance remains positive throughout the forecast period, mostly due to movement of the lighting expenses of general fund, movement of the street employees to the general fund, and there's a review of street improvement. State highway fund also, that's Fund Three, moving, movement of lighting expenses to the general fund and review of street improvement. As we get into the body of the plan, which starts on page 10, most of it is for the general fund, and you'll see the first section there is revenues. 16, 17, and 18 are all for actual revenues for those major revenue sources, and were forecasted 19 through 23. Then there are department by department keys, just like our budget is throughout the city, all the way down to page 16, which shows the end balances for the general fund. Before we get to the end balances, I do want to comment on page 15. If you look at page 15, you'll notice that there's this large section that is typically called miscellaneous expenses, and a lot of times, these are the fees that the county auditor, the county treasurer charges the city for collection of property tax, it's the payment of refunds from the earnings tax office, it's outside legal fees. You'll notice that in 2019, there's a lot of zeros. We've taken all of those, and the state wanted us to incorporate those into departments. So, all of the county auditor fees, the treasurer fees, election expenses, they all go to the auditors department and are going to be booked under there. So, they just moved from this section into a department. Outside legal fees goes into the law department. Property tax and, let's see, property tax goes into the, which is the real estate tax, goes into public lands and buildings, and earnings tax refunds goes into the earnings tax office. You'll see on the left, each one of those in the brackets behind the actual title of the expense shows where, which key it moves to in the general fund. The state has always disliked these miscellaneous expenses and wanted to put them all into departments. That's why you see a lot of zeros. The balance is the same, they're just moved to a different area. Page 16 is our totals. If we look at the line that has the double line under it, the first double line, just in the middle of the page, you'll see that 2019 has a total projected fund balance positive of $424,721 at year end. We are taking $250,000 as projected outstanding encumbrances or purchase orders left at the end of the year, and our projected balance for the end of this year is $174,721. You can see how that projects for future years, moving to the right for 2020 through 2023. There are some recovery plan items, just like we talked about the, the health insurance issue back on page six, I believe. Those are kind of below the line as recovery plan items, you'll see at the bottom. There is an attachment, which is attachment B, that looks like this. This is the capital projects plan that has to be passed by council as part of this. You'll notice when we were talking about the capital projects plan, in the assumptions, it said a draft plan has been presented. This is not a full commitment. While these numbers are in the fiscal recovery plan, the items that are here are not yet set in stone. Council has till the next fiscal emergency commission meeting to decide how you want to disburse these funds. If we say, so much money, what goes to parks, that's fine. How it wants to be split up and utilized within that parks key is going to be up to council to pass, pass that plan and work with the mayor on. So, this capital improvement planning worksheet that is attachment here is considered only a draft, and changes can happen to this. At this point, you guys have any questions for me on this?
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Stiff, can you explain why, I guess it took so long for the council to get to the point where the mayor is able to present the plan that's here? Like, some of the stuff that went into it?
It's, it's a long process. We started, our office really started working on this at the beginning of February, putting together payroll. Payroll is projected on individual personnel. So, it's not just this department's payroll is this amount of money. We, we look at each person, we look at when they're getting their increases, what keys people get paid out of. There were a lot of movements of people making sure that all of the public works people are put in the right departmental keys, because there's not a public works department, they're paid out of several different areas. Once we got the projections there and we got the health insurance information, we were able to make a pretty rough draft using the original fiscal emergency... were able to make a pretty rough draft using the original fiscal emergency plan, and then incorporating all of the items from the capital improvements plan into that and finding other areas where departments may require additional purchases, such as building in information on the, being able to find new turnout here for the fire department. When are things running out? Projecting how many of those we have to buy each year. Once we got all that together, which was about three weeks ago, we sent that on to the state. They were also working on theirs. We met last Monday was the first availability for the state auditors to come down and go through this, and we went line by line through this information. We had several meetings with Mr. Bonso, the head of the finance committee, couple of Sundays sitting here for several hours going through what the desire was or what departments require. Once we were able to pull all of this together, we had also met with the mayor's office, but this is really being driven by the state. It's our numbers being organized by the state, and then making sure that our numbers are correct. There was a lot of fine tuning of information being passed back and forth to get to the point where this was ready to be presented. Our meeting, our final meeting with the mayor and Mrs. Lake and Mr. Gears was yesterday on Monday to go through, and there were still some items that, there was some expression of changing a few things. They were minor and did not affect the bottom line, except for one thing we did want to add in that did change it by 15,000, and we got the final copies today from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Any other questions or comments? I did have a discussion with, and, I'm sorry, April Davis today, and this is, in its entirety, must be passed in its entirety, we can't make changes to it. We either have to pass it, or if we don't do this before the end of the month, we'll be out of compliance. As I said, we have to pass it by the end of the month. So it's not like we can go through and make individual changes tonight. This is what, correct, this is what the state, auditor of state's office has approved, based upon the numbers that the mayor and Mr. Stith and Mr. Bonso provided. So it's not something that we can go through and change numbers on, is the point I want to make. Mr. Stith?
With the exception of the capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement is a draft.
To determine where that extra money is going to be spent on streets, on parks, on purchasing equipment, with the exception of the two things that are in there which are pretty solidly built in, is the debt for the fire truck and the ladder truck.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. When is the deadline for approving that capital improvements plan?
Technically, they would like to see it today, because it's one year from when we made the last.
Just tell them about the, yeah.
Yeah.
The capital improvements plan.
Yeah.
Capital. It's supposed to be approved as part of this plan, but only as a draft. So we have other, we have an opportunity to do that later on. It'll be presented at the next commission meeting next week as a draft for comment from them. I'm sure they'd like to get it done in the next few weeks.
I.
Yeah, Mr. Stith?
I spoke with Ms. Davis from the state today about what the timeline on the capital improvement, the final one was, and she said really the next, not this coming fiscal emergency meeting, but the following one, which she predicted would be in June.
Really?
She said the first of June. She didn't think they'd have one in May.
Okay.
So there doesn't seem to be as much of a rush on that. They are looking for an approval, they're looking for the approval of the draft so that they could show that work is being done on this, but not set in concrete until their next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mr. Mayor?
Real quick, the, I'm a layman, numbers person, it's not, from the way I look at it, we have so much money coming in, and then we have expenses, and we're in fiscal emergency, so we cannot spend more money than we've got coming in. And I think if you look at it, our balances at the end of the year is $174,000. So any increase of any number will put this over, which puts us in non-compliance. And I'll give you an example. There are some logical challenges to the agreements we have, and we will defend those, our position on this, which is the numbers. That's what we're defending, are the numbers. If we, if we're successful, fine. If we're not, then we're, then we're moving into a really perilous position, because at that point in time, even though some people think the funds are in certain funds and they can't be touched, that's not true. So I guess what I'm saying is that before we spend anything, we got to make sure that everything's in compliance, and that's what we're doing. As hard as it's been, as difficult as it's been for everybody involved in this thing, it comes down to this, it's the numbers. And we can't go over those numbers. Now, there's a couple of things that could happen. They could say, okay, you're not in compliance. Conceivably, they could look at us and say, you're over for the next year, so next month, your budget is 80% of what it was. They could restrict us from doing that. Do I think that'll happen? I sure hope not, but this is one of these difficult things that we have to address, and it's not whether you think so, or you believe it, or anybody else believes it. The fact of the matter is, we don't have any choice. That's, you know, it's, the old question is, it's not a hard decision to make when you don't have any choice. We don't have any choice. No matter what I would desire to do, no matter what you would desire to do, I would like to do a lot of things for the residents, I would like to do a lot of things for the employees. I can't. I just can't. Now, if we're put into a position where we don't have any choice, then we'll have to adjust. But this is just one of those situations where I don't see an alternative. If I, if we, if I said to Mr. Stith and Don Lake and James, I want to do this, we want to put this in there, we want this, we want that, they'd say, no. And then what do we do? So it's, that's it in a nutshell, as far as a layman's perspective on numbers. That's what this amounts to, it's numbers. And, you know, and I'll be honest with you, over the years, I've said some things that probably shouldn't have said, you know, I want to, Mr. Stith has done an outstanding job, he's worked on it, and I must also say that, and I've said this before, over the years, Mr. Stith, Mr. Sankar, and Mr. Moore, all auditor, finance chairman, finance chairman, have been saying for years, this is not going to work. And for years, they did everything they could to make payroll. They took money out of funds and everything like that. It didn't work. They did everything they could to keep the doors open, because a lot of increases in our expenses, we didn't have any choice over. So that's the history of it. And so now, we're in a position where, the way I interpret this thing, 118, is we don't have any choice, you're going to do it this way. And that's what I've said before, we deal with civil service 124, 4117 negotiations in 118, the fiscal emergency. Now, who's got the hammer? I don't know. But right now, I think the state auditor's got the hammer. And so that's how, that's how we are, where we're at. And like I said, I would love to see numbers, and I would, you know, and I've said this before, Mr. Gears and I both over the years have liked to tell people, yes, we'll do that for you, but we can't. And then we have other issues where some people are saying, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that. The old thing is, show me the money. And the idea is, maybe, when we get out of this thing, that somehow somebody will record all this and write it down, so we don't do it again, because we, this city's done it twice. And both times, and I might add, both times, they tried to be nice, they tried to help people out, well, they couldn't afford sometimes to help people out, and then they did, so. That's my feeling on it, as a non-accountant person, but just somebody that's been around here longer than dirt, and has seen the same thing over and over and over again, and it's tough, but this is the hand we're dealt, and we're going to play it.
If you go to the back of the document, there's something new this time called an attachment A, that has a breakdown of all personnel, the assumptions and personnel, so that we know where people are being paid now, out of which department, which departments might share expenses. So the last five pages are a new attachment A. I just want to make sure that you all know about that. Mr. Sankar?
Question through the chair to the auditor. The numbers that are in the payroll keys on the plan are based on the actual numbers of personnel that are listed on the.
Attachment A?
That is correct.
That's why I wanted to make sure I pointed those out, because they are reflective of what is in the plan. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, first I want to say thanks to auditor and everybody who put so much time into this. I'm a little, what I really want to say is I'm a little upset, not upset, but disappointed that we've got literally one night to look at this and pass this. Last year, we, after our first night of reviewing the plan, I took it home and in two hours found a $900,000 error in our good. Makes me hesitant to want to pass this without reading and spending a little bit of time on a 20-page financial document, a quick look. It looked like the same mistake wasn't made again this year, but I consider it like the mayor says, this, I think since I've been on council, this is the most important thing that we actually do here. Until we can get our city on the right path, this is our blueprint, and this is what we do to enable us to do that and to enable our future councils to do that. Hopefully, they'll be as committed to it as we are. So I'm just, I'm upset that I don't have time to give this the attention that I would like to give it. It's not that I don't trust the work that's been put into it, but I trusted it last year, and I still found errors, and I wish we could have had this a week earlier even.
Well, we had a committee of the whole meeting scheduled, but it was canceled because the documents weren't ready.
Right, exactly. I mean, I know, I know we tried, and I know that everybody tried to get there. Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Bonso?
Just to be clear, what is being asked of council to do tonight?
To ask of council tonight? It would be wonderful if we passed it. If not, we'll have special meeting sometime later this week, because the commission is meeting Tuesday, and they. We're meeting on Tuesday, and so it's got to be passed, it must be passed before the end of the month. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that the capital improvements plan is just a draft at this point, but I know there was lots of discussion about the amount of money going towards Victory Park, and it looks like that has, that line has been changed. I got quite a few emails about it this week, so it looks like it's just been changed to a park overhaul, and so we'll determine that later, so I just want to make sure that is correct.
That is correct, and as we were in our meetings yesterday, even the streets and things like that, anything over, Mr. Gears, correct me if I'm wrong, anything over $50,000, $50,000 or more, you have to come to council anyway. You can't do anything without council's approval.
Perfect.
For those larger items.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
If I may, part of the discussion was with Mr. Gears, Mr. Lee, you can say where the capital improvements will be found, but if you pigeonhole them, it makes it more difficult, because we could have an expense of $200,000 pop up that we weren't expecting. And there's also the process of Mr. Gears doing his thing, like it's got to go out for bid, there's got to be engineering, there's got to be a lot of things done to transfer that money into action. So I think the discussion was, it'd be better off not to pigeonhole it, and so that way it would give the flexibility, and council's got to approve it anyway, it would give the flexibility to make sure it's, you know, to do something, because we could have a $200,000 sewer collapse. Sorry, Joe. But we could, you know, and it could pop up, and then we've got to move, we've got to have the funds to repair it. So that's, that was the intent of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I empathize with the comments that have been made regarding the timing and just the clarification. I do think in the last week or so, there's been an opportunity to clarify that the plan is a draft, it is a thought, is an intention, and that future persons will be able to employ it. Building on what the mayor just shared about how we might need some of this capital funding for emergency situations, I'd like to make the comment that I think it could be worthwhile for, in our time on council and future councils, to consider when a bid comes in and it's less than what was projected, that to the extent we can, mark those funds for the unexpected. I know that in the last few days, Mr. Gears has sent to the finance committee some bids, and they seem to have come in under what is currently in the plan. And so to the extent that we can keep an eye out for that, as well as ensure we're setting aside dollars to match for grants, I think we will stay in the right direction. So again, thank you, everybody, for your work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. And Mr. Stith, I'm sure you have some comments about a rainy day fund?
Actually, the, there's, we researched rainy day funds, and I think it's 5703.13, but I have to look. The Higher Advice Code talks about a reserve balance fund, and it's not what we think. So under Ohio law, you don't, you can't establish a fund that you put money into off to the side to use for a rainy day and draw back out of. We worked with the auditor of state on trying to find something that would do that, that in a year where there's surplus monies, we could kind of tuck it away for a rainy day and then later pull it back out. That's not the way it works. What you do is you can pass a, you can pass a resolution to create a reserve balance fund, and it's actually a reserve balance account, it's not a fund. And then what you do is you say, okay, we have $250,000 extra. So what we're going to do is we're going to lower our certificate of estimated resources by $250,000, and then we're going to lower our cash position report by $250,000. So all of our financial reporting will be done at a level, $250,000 under what our bank balance really is. So it's kind of this shell game that says you can't appropriate that money, because the certificate says it's not there, and you can't use or spend the money, because the cash position report states that it's not there, but the bank balance is really there. And then when you're ready to use it, what you do is you pass another resolution saying, we're going to increase that certificate and increase that cash balance on the cash position report up to an extra $50,000 that we want of that 250 we put away. That's the way it works, you know, under Ohio law, as to our understanding and reviewing this with the state auditors. That's not really the rainy day fund. If it's the desire of council to chase something like that down, it really just lowers your bottom line on your books to make it look like you don't have that money, when everyone really knows you do. It does change what you can appropriate.
It would be amazing if we ever got there, first of all.
Yes, yes, it would be.
I will point out that in the draft of the capital improvement worksheet for 2020 and on, there's $20,000 appropriated for matching funds for park and rec grants, so there is some of that included on page two of the attachment B. But I would be happy if we just got through the end of the year with these numbers. Agree, Mayor?
If I may comment, you know, when Jim was talking about a reserve fund, we've been talking about this since the beginning of times. Had we done it and everybody left it alone, we wouldn't be here. It's hard to put that money away. You know, you're young, you're growing up, you save, it's hard to save, but when you need it, you need it. And so that's been discussed for years, but every time you get $2,000 or $3,000 extra, somebody wants it, has got a project for it, and that project usually runs eight to 10, and you end up losing, so. So it's a tough decision, but down the road, I sure as heck hope this city gets involved in it and stays with it.
Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, I want to thank the work that the mayor and the city auditor, excuse me, I don't feel like it today. Excuse me, the mayor and the city auditor, the president of council, and others have kind of done on this. So I think that this plan, you know, I personally am frustrated as well that there wasn't more time. I mean, I expressed repeatedly the desire that we needed, that the council needed more time to review this. I will say that I do think that this plan overall does express the intent that I feel like I've heard from the rest of council in the time that I've had to serve with you all. One of the things I want you all to look at is page 17 of the plan, it's the street construction and repair fund. So that's fund two. If we look at 2016 and 2017, so in 2016, personal services, there were 470,000, of the $604,000 in state money that we got for streets, 470,000 is just used to pay for staffing. We only, we used other funds in that to pay for streetlights, to pay for salt, to pay for other things, but none of those funds actually went to repaving streets. And a similar story happens in 2017 as well. In 2017, it was 371,000 for personnel and that 139,000 is mostly streetlights and then there's salt and maybe some, a little bit of patching material, but there's very, there's nothing for street repaving. In 2018, that's when this council was elected and started, or I guess when this council started their term, in our last fiscal recovery plan, the first amendment of the plan, we decided and took a bold stand there and said, in that street fund, we are not putting, we're not paying for employees anymore, and so we're going to start phasing that out. So that year, we took out, we moved one person out of the street fund to go to the water fund, and then we moved, that was truly a water fund employee, and we moved one person to go to the general fund. And then that means that the personal services was $296,000. But we said at the time, hey, we don't have necessarily, we don't exactly know what to do with all the street money, we didn't necessarily have like a great idea, so let's just save it for the future for now. So we ended the year last year with a balance of $553,000 in the street fund. And then so if we look at the plan for 2019 and beyond, if you look at personnel services, it's zero. If you look at contractual services, so that would pay for like some road mix or what have you, zero. Materials and supply, or it could pay for other things, but the materials and supplies would pay for salt and other things, zero. Fixed expenses, that would have paid for like streetlights, zero. In 2019, the street fund, there's over a million dollars in capital outlay and that's to repave streets. And this is only possible because of the work that this council has done to reduce costs and kind of have a mindset of austerity when it comes to hiring personnel. And that's not just personnel in our two biggest departments, it's personnel across the board. I personally wanted to see additional street employees hired, or public works employees hired in the plan so that we would just have additional hands on deck. And it wasn't the financially prudent thing to do at this time, and so those aren't in there. So, but what is in there is street repaving. And so I just want to encourage this council and, you know, if you go through this, there's so many great things happening and so a great future. And that honestly, we're setting our future elected officials up for success with this plan because no matter who gets elected, they're all going to talk about, whoever gets elected mayor, they're all going to talk about this, what they're going to do for streets, what they're going to do for streets. But if it wasn't for the work that this council did, they probably wouldn't be able to do anything for streets, or very little, because they wouldn't have had the money to do it. And so even though we're not going to get the credit for it because the future councils and the future mayors are going to be the one that will get that credit, it was the work that we did here, the work that we've done over the past year and a half that's going to allow that to happen. So I just want to say that we should all be proud of ourselves, proud of ourselves for that. We should all be happy that Norwood is going to finally start repaving some streets. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Any other discussion? We need to take some action tonight. Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
I have voted five to one, the motion fails. Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have the first reading of the ordinance tonight.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
Members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the first reading.
Ordinance approving the second amendment to the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Would you like to schedule the special meeting now? Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. I would kind of ask through the chair to my fellow colleague, would there be any interest potentially in maybe doing a second reading tonight as well? That way we schedule a special meeting in case all of us couldn't be here, that might make it easier to happen.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. I just, in good conscience, I can't vote on a plan that I haven't had a chance to even look at.
Mr. Bonso.
I move that we have the second reading of the previous ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
Members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the second reading.
Ordinance approving the second amendment to the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
Just wondering if Mr. Seth would have a comment on...
Mr. Stith.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Each one of you should have received two different emails today having two copies of the fiscal emergency plan. On that email is my cell phone number to contact me. I'm available all day tomorrow and Thursday until 10:30. Feel free, if you're looking through this, even if it's later tonight, give me a call. Happy to answer any questions or if you want to point out any issues, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Stith. Mr. Bonso.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I would recommend that we have the special meeting on Thursday, the 28th, or Friday, the 29th, one of those two days.
Much pleasure. Mr. Clark.
I cannot do Thursday, I'm ministering over at church on Thursday.
Friday, good for everyone. Ms. Stevenson?
I would not be available either day.
Not either day?
Not either day.
Is Mrs. Hanahan out of town all week? Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Could we do tomorrow even?
We have to do it tomorrow then?
Hmm.
We would have to do it tomorrow if Ms. Stevenson can't do it on Thursday or Friday because Mrs. Hanahan will be gone all week.
Oh, she's gone, I'm sorry.
Do it Monday. I mean, I...
You want to do it Monday? I think they want to, I believe the commission wants to, they want to get it out to the commission. Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, if we did it tomorrow, it would have to be like at 6:00. I couldn't...
Have to be what?
It would have to be at 6:00 o'clock. I could not attend any later than that.
And Ms. Stevenson?
Similarly, I do have another commitment that actually starts at 6:20 tomorrow evening. So a 6:00 would be what would work for me on Wednesday.
What about 5:30? Mr. Clark suggested.
Five, one second.
Yes, Mr. Sankar.
Would this special meeting need 24 hours notice so we couldn't have it till 8:30 anyway?
Mm-hmm.
Good call.
Or later.
Yep.
That's true.
So it would have to be after 8:30? At 8:30?
I mean, what, Saturday?
I think the commission, they want to get it out, the commission, they want to get it out to the commission members.
But apparently we can't.
It's like...
Yes, Mr. Breeden.
Any day's good for me. I have to excuse myself for just a second, but any day's good for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breeden, I appreciate it. Mr. Thompson.
Since it seems that we can't get this together, I would be willing to, if possible, we could do the third reading tonight and go ahead and do it. Again, this is why we shouldn't wait till the day that something this huge is due to bring it to us. But seeing as that, it seems that there's no other way or day to do this, I'd be willing to do it tonight.
May I make a comment on that?
Yes, sir.
That's a noble move and I do appreciate it because I know how you feel about this and I understand your feeling. It was a long process with the state and everything else. And for that, even, it's called mayor's report, I'll apologize for the tardiness, but I appreciate your cooperation in going along with this.
And my point, as I said before, I very much appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it, I just would have preferred some time to review.
I get it, I understand.
But I appreciate everything you did.
Certainly something that we were trying to do.
Of course, I know.
As I said, we scheduled a committee of the whole meeting and just didn't have the documents in time. So, Mr. Bonso, you are on the winning side. You can move to reconsider the ordinance. You can move to reconsider and have all three readings since you voted on those looking at the rules. Really should reconsider.
Should, could we, so instead of, we couldn't just vote to have a third reading?
We should reconsider though.
Okay. So I would make...
To reconsider and suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Do we need to reconsider the second reading too or just the first motion?
And Mr. Clark? Is there any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to reconsider and have, suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance approving the second amendment for the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving the second amendment to the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance approving the second amendment to the detailed financial plan for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
I move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Bonso, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonso.
Thank you, Madam President. So one thing I just want to point out here too, and the personnel, is that in all departments, this kind of expresses our will for where we want to see departments funded. So like I said earlier, I wanted to see additional people in the street department or additional public works employees hired, but that's not in here. There's really no new positions created. Essentially, the staffing levels in all departments reflect the same staffing levels that we had in our last plan, so just wanted to make sure that was noted.
Thank you, Mr. Bonso. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonso.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports, we do have two requests to address council. The first is Danny Isaacson. If you'll come forward, you'll have, give us your name and address and you'll have five minutes to address council.
I'll try and be quick.
Thanks.
My name is Danny Isaacson and my address is 1311 East Central Park. So I'm here tonight to talk about a project we've got going on. So I run a company called Cohere, we're a community engagement and insights company in Cincinnati, and we organize conversations between mostly sort of unelected decision makers in government agencies and utilities, hospitals, universities, and the people who live the issues every day. We call them everyday experts. And so as part of that work, we're doing a project with the new president of Duke Energy, helping her set up a community and customer sort of advisory board. And as part of that, we're going around the city and holding different conversations directly between the president of Duke and small groups of residents, property owners, business owners, to talk both about how Duke can be a better service provider in terms of outages, billing, services, payment, vegetation, and then depending on what part of the city we're in, so how relevant it is, we then sort of have the second part of the conversation about people's concerns or what they've heard about the central corridor pipeline, can ask questions of Amy, the president, and then we sort of end the discussion with, okay, let's say the state approves the pipeline along one of the routes, there's a worst-case scenario, and then what does a less worst-case scenario look like? So in Madisonville, a few weeks ago, residents were really interested in talking about, okay, how do we avoid the school as a sort of a main priority? And then for residents who were worried about eminent domain, one woman said, you know, if you're going to tear up my yard, I don't want to be made whole, I want to be made whole plus. And so we spent a whole discussion with a bunch of other property owners who thought similarly, what does that look like? What does that mean for them? So we are having this discussion with Norwood, Oakley, and Evanston homeowners and residents and property owners. I apologize for the short notice, but tomorrow night, and it's going to be with a group of sort of 10 to 12 residents from those three neighborhoods and the president of Duke and one other person, and then I will facilitate the conversation. Starts at 6:00 PM, it's a new Bethel Baptist Church here in Norwood, and we always have food. And so I just wanted to let you all know to see if anyone here is interested in joining. Just so you know, I ask everyone who participates to participate as themselves, so it's obviously relevant that you're on council or elected officials, but you'd be sort of there speaking in large part just, you know, yourself as a concerned Norwood leader and resident. But it is, I don't know if you've met her, but the new president, Amy, is wonderful and thoughtful and willing to answer hard questions and have a real discussion. So if anyone is interested in joining, let me know and I will stop there and just see if you have any questions about that or the work we do in general.
Any questions at all? He did call me and I volunteered to go, so, Mr. Thompson.
Is there a place we can go for information about the pipeline, just in general, people who might be listening might want to look into it?
So I, we're working on this project for Duke in terms of helping them listen to their customers and learn from their customers, but I don't, I'm not a Duke employee.
Okay. I didn't know if you knew, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. You know, our role is sort of, I don't have a position on it. I'm there because our only position is that people in power should talk to people impacted by their decisions in a meaningful way, and other than that, we sort of stay out of it.
Thank you.
I will attend, I'll see if what I can find out for you.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Pastor Sonny James. Again, you'll have five minutes.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue here in Norwood. First, I would like to, see, I'm so glad that I was able to attend this meeting and I want, I noticed that a lot of folks, a lot of residents are watching this programming. And so I also want to give credit where credit is due in just listening to a lot of the work that's been put forth by people just like me that love this great city. So I want to commend each of you who have boldly faced these challenges that lie before our city. I oftentimes don't get an opportunity to give kudos to our law department, namely the person in charge, but tonight, clearly residents, you can see that Mr. Moore has done some great work in trying to bring in some good folks to talk about diversifying some things that can really take our community to the next level. And so I want to make sure that we give credit where credit is due. I also was very excited, actually, to hear some challenges come out tonight because I also was very excited, actually, to hear some challenges come out tonight, because until we're really faced with how are we moving or not moving forward, or what are we doing that we shouldn't be doing, or how, what are we doing that we need to redirect, one of the things, before I sit down, I just want to challenge you, and the mayor said it, I'm going to mimic him, you know, if we keep doing the same things the same way, expecting different results, well, that's the definition of insanity. So as we move forward, residents, you can clearly see that we have something so important on the table today, but yet even the council members, and again, I say this with all due respect, because I do trust and believe a lot went into this, our auditor's office, I can honestly say that I believe they put a lot of work into this, but the issue is, I would like for the auditor, or someone to tell the residents who the state auditor's representative is, that understands the seriousness that we're facing, and under fiscal emergency, to put you all, really to cripple you, and only give you five days or less to make something that's even, I'll mimic what's been said today, one of the most important roles that you all have, and yet you're given less than five days to even review it. So as council members come and go, and I'm finishing, I just want to encourage you to stay bold, and we've got to find out who are the powers-to-be that keep us crippled, and keep us not able to move in the way that great people, like all of you sitting here today, you love Norwood, and I commend you for that, but if we keep allowing ourselves to be crippled, how can we fairly move $900,000 in two hours? Wow. Imagine what you might be able to find in two weeks, so that we can then redirect and focus our energies. Thank you so much for time today to speak, but we have a lot of awesome people here, I am pleased to see all of the hard work, you guys are trying your best, but a lot of times, we allow things to cripple us, and we got to challenge that, so that we can be fair to the residents of Norwood. But I would like to find out who made the decision to wait till the last minute, which cripples the ones that make the vote, and if we can get that information, so that maybe we can challenge them for future councils to say, hey, under fiscal emergency, you can't do that to a community, not if you're saying you're here to help them. So that's the only thing that I have on the table. Good work on trying to just move our city in a forward direction. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Pastor James. Excuse me, we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? I'll give you my regular update on retirees' health plan. We did send out third notices to folks that we had not heard from previously. I think most of the applications are in now. I think that the money that we appropriated or anticipated is going to be pretty much right on target. Mr. Stith, do you agree?
Yes, depending if those, depending if those are...
We have a couple hanging up with legal opinions.
Correct.
So I want to assure you that the administrative committee is taking their work very seriously, checking out dates of employment, and whenever there's any kind of a question, Mr. Stith's office has been amazingly helpful in verifying dates of employment. Mr. Moore's office has given us several legal opinions, and so just want to publicly thank those two departments for assisting the work of the committee. And I think Mr. Stith is about ready to enter all of these folks into his database, and we'll get some checks out soon. So, thank you all for doing it, and it's been interesting, it's been a lot of work, but the end is near, so hopefully the new plan is in place. Just wanted to give you that update. Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Madam President. Let's see, I have a public service announcement, before I get to that, I too want to thank Mr. Stith, I have noticed the work that went into this plan, and want to give you kudos, great job, great work, Mr. Mayor, nice work. So my public service announcement today, the city of Norwood, Ohio, entry-level police officer test announcement. The Norwood Civil Service Commission is accepting applications for the position of police officer. The selection process will involve a series of tests, beginning with a written examination to be held on Wednesday, April 3, 2019, at 6:00 PM, the Norwood High School Cafeteria, 2020 Sherman Avenue, 45212. Applicants must be at least 21 years of age, no older than 35 years of age, unless currently commissioned by law enforcement officer in Ohio. At the time of appointment, applicants must receive a minimum passing grade of 70% on the written test, prior to receiving any additional credit. Candidates passing the written test shall be required to undergo a physical and/or complete agility test, polygraph test, and psychological testing. Applicants must successfully pass all tests. All applicants must test, have completed the Ohio Peace Officer Basic Training Academy Course, your commission must be good standings and require no additional updates. Once again, Wednesday, April 3, at 6:00 PM, at the Norwood High School Cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'd like to schedule a Park Streets Rec Infrastructure Committee meeting, I'm hoping to do it the day of our next council meeting, April 9, from 6:15 to 7:15, or 6:30 to 7:15, somewhere in there, but we'll stay at 6:15 to 7:15, and I'll have an agenda come out before then, I just wanted to get it on people's calendar.
Okay, so Tuesday, April 9, at 6:15, here in council.
Here in council.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Sure.
Any other new business? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So on April 13, Keep Cincinnati Beautiful is hosting a state highway kind of cleanup day, that they normally partner with ODOT and the city of Cincinnati to clean, like, parts of just, of the 75, 71, and the Cincinnati side of the Norwood lateral, just some of the trash and stuff that's on there. This year, the safety service director, I reached out to Keep Cincinnati Beautiful to see if they're open to having the city of Norwood participate. They were, and the safety service director is willing to have a public works crew to kind of assist with that, but we're actually going to be able to participate with them. So on April 13, we're actually going to have community volunteers that are going to be trained, have the proper safety equipment, and will be able to help kind of assist with some of the maintenance kind of on the side of the lateral. Now, all of that was happening at the same time that our public works crews have been out on the lateral cleaning up, and so the lateral looks a lot better right now than it has. So, thank you, kudos to them, I know they put a lot of effort into that, doing that. But I'm excited that on April 13, it's a Saturday, we'll be able to kind of help touch it up, if you will. So that's going to be at 9:00 AM?
You know, that's the Easter egg hunt, too. Just so you know, recreation.
That's good to know. Well, it's, if residents can choose which one they want to go to, but the Easter egg hunt sounds a lot, like a lot more fun, I will say that. But it's at 9:00 AM, at, it's at the Seymour Avenue, ODOT Public Works, ODOT Garage, so it's 1400 Seymour Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio, that's where the meat will happen, we'll get training, they'll give us some safety vests, and then there will be a specific area that the Norwood volunteers that want to participate in that will be going to. So I think it's a good opportunity, it's something we haven't participated in before, and something that actually UDF, I think, is one of their presenting sponsors of that, so it'll be kind of fun to have some Norwood people there, too, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. I'm sorry, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President, just to build on what Mr. Bonzal shared, there's a Facebook event that residents can use to sign up for that, and it actually includes a link. They're actually asking folks to give input on where work happens, so there's this, there is a box you can check, I took the survey last night, that actually says Norwood Lateral. So the goal is to have enough people participate, they will go to multiple locations, but if you want to underscore support for Norwood in particular, I believe the event on Facebook is actually just called State Roadway Cleanup, and getting ahead now, I think that's what it's called, for that same day, April 13, and if you go in, you can register to participate, but then there's a link to a survey where you can check Norwood Lateral.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson, good information. Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, and I appreciate the extra time here, Ms. Stevenson kind of brought a good point up. So, interesting fact that of the people that voted, when I talked to Megan, the coordinator of this, she said it was like 56% of like, all the people that vote are voting like Norwood Lateral is the thing to clean up, so it was, it's being noticed, and it's the Cincinnati and the Norwood side, it's not just the, it's all one lateral there, two cities, one lateral, but anyways, but the second part of that is that the first 200 people that actually register on their website, so if you go to their page, there's like a post on the event page, you can either go to Keep Cincinnati Beautiful's website, just Google it, I think you can find it, or you can go to the Facebook event, the State Roadway Cleanup. There is a post on there that says that the Cincinnati Zoo is giving away 200, for the first 200 volunteers, a free ticket to go to the zoo, so they're wanting to see people, so you have to register and be one of the first 200, and then when you show up, they'll give you the ticket, so it's another opportunity to help out.
Thank you. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President, and the same direction of cleanup, I just wanted to remind folks who are interested, that the Norwood Cleanup Week is going to begin on the 30th of March. Again, there is a Facebook event post, but we heard about this at our last regular meeting, I just wanted to remind folks that between 9:00 AM and noon on Saturday, March 30, there's an opportunity to get out for the Montgomery Road Street Sweep, I think that's the right day, and that, well, that begins here at City Hall, at 9:00 AM. The next day, Sunday, March 31, anytime throughout the day, suggested between 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM, to do something in your neighborhood on your street, a street sweep, get out, say hi to folks, and tidy up a bit, and then the conclusion would be Saturday, August 6, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, meeting at Victory Park at 9:00 AM to grab some supplies, and then go out and clean up your neighborhood park, and so it's opportunity all week to polish the gym, and again, there is an event post on Facebook where you can sign up and see those details.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Yes.
Thank you, I have three more.
Go ahead.
Okay, so just a reminder, I believe it was also at the last meeting, there was reference made to black captains, if anyone is interested, that meeting is also on Saturday, and if you need more information, you can contact me, I'll make sure you get it. Wednesday, April 3, is the next implementation meeting for a lot of the work that's gone into the community agreement, it's an opportunity for anyone to still join in, that meeting is at 6:30 at Zion UCC. And also, I did not announce it at this meeting, but I'm really happy to say this Thursday, March 27, 28, sorry, I got excited and said the wrong date, we're having our second Ward One Community Council meeting. These are going to take place regularly on the fourth Thursdays of the month, at the Recreation Center, we'll meet down in the cafeteria. This is a chance for Ward One residents to come together and talk about what is of importance to them, based on conversation with some residents, a couple topics that we'll touch on this week are infrastructure, community engagement, as well as reviewing the capital improvement plan. That meeting is from 7 to 8 on Thursday, the 28th.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just one more, I think I counted wrong, I would like to call an Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meeting for the first Thursday in April, that's the 4th, 7:00 PM here in council chambers.
So, April the 4th, 7:00 PM, here in council chambers, economic development and community engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, got lots of questions about the yard sale, the city ward yard sale, wanted to see if we could get that together.
Yeah, I forgot, I was asked about that. It's usually in May and September. May 4th and 5th is the first weekend in May, and the 11th and 12th, well, that's Mother's Day, so you probably don't want to do that. So my guess is maybe May the, I'm sorry, we do a Friday and Saturday, right? So May the 3rd and 4th, or would you want to do it on the 10th and 11th, but that's Mother's Day weekend, so let's just go ahead and set September, and we'll get them done. What's your pleasure? Mr. Sankar, you're always the one who makes this motion.
Say that first, the 3rd and 4th would probably be...
I think the 3rd and 4th would be better. All right. Mr. Moore, can you do a resolution for the next meeting?
Okay, do you have September dates to suggest? Do you want to do the September one?
So Labor Day is the 2nd, so the first weekend in September would be the 6th and Or did you want to do it later? What's your pleasure? 6th and 7th?
Yeah.
All right, there you go. September 6th and 7th, thanks. Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Any other new business? All right, we'll move on to communications, the first is a letter from the Department of Commerce regarding objections to the renewal of liquor permits.
Dear Clerk of Legislative Authority, this is notice that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivision will expire on June 1, 2019. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. Ohio Revised Code, Section 4303.271B, provides the legislative authority with the right to object to the renewal of a permit and to request a hearing. The hearing may be held in the county seat of the county in which the permit premises is located, if that request is made in writing. This will be your only opportunity to object to the renewal of a liquor permit premises, which might be a problem in your community. In order to register a valid objection with the Division of Liquor Control and request a hearing, the legislative authority must pass a resolution that specifies the problems at the liquor permit premises and the legal grounds for the objection as set forth in Ohio Revised Code, Section 4303.292A. It is suggested that a separate resolution be passed for each permit premises. The chief legal officer of your political subdivision must also submit a statement with the resolution that, in the chief legal officer's opinion, the objection is based upon substantial legal grounds within the meaning and intent of Ohio Revised Code, Section 4303.292A. The resolution and chief legal officer's statement must be addressed to the Division of Liquor Control, Attention Legal Section 6606, Tussing Road, PO Box 4005, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, 43068-9005, and postmarked no later than May 2, 2019. For your convenience, you may access our brochure entitled "How to Object to the Issuance or Renewal of a Liquor Permit" from our website at www.com.ohio.gov/liqr. Under Licensing, click on Renewals, and under the mega menu, please select the link "Object to the Issuance or Renewal of a Liquor Permit." You may wish to contact the law enforcement agency for your jurisdiction to determine if it has any information which will aid in your decision whether or not to object and request a hearing. For your convenience, you may obtain a list of issued permit holders in your jurisdiction from our website at the above link. Under Liquor Control, click on Look It Up, and under the mega menu, please select Search Permit Holders, Permit Applicant/Holder Information Types and Status. You will then enter the search criteria for your county, city, or township to bring up the issued permits in your jurisdiction. If you do not have access to the Internet, you may request a list from us by writing the division at the below address. If you determine that there are no permit premises within your jurisdiction that you wish to object to, you do not need to take any action. The renewal applications for those premises will be submitted by the permit holders and will be processed by the Division and issued as appropriate. If you have any questions, please contact the Legal Section at 614-644-2489. Very truly yours, Cassandra L. Hicks, Deputy Superintendent and Chief of Licensing.
Ms. Stevenson?
I believe that we received and filed a letter.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Just if there are any nuisance establishments that have their liquor license flowing freely right now, that need to be submitted to council or to the law director for a resolution, that council would have to vote on it. In the past, we have had some that we have... In the past, we have had some that we have objected to. So if there are any neighborhoods that you're aware of, you know, now's the opportunity to at least submit the resolution to the board. Doesn't guarantee that anything will change, but at least you're given the opportunity to object.
I'm sure this was sent to all the building, fire, health, tax, and all those departments that we normally do, but we just double-check and make sure, so that if they have any objections, I can let the Law Department know. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Treasurer regarding monthly reports for January and February 2019.
Dear Council members, attached are the monthly reports for January and February 2019. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you. Tim Maloney, Treasurer, City of Norwood.
Mr. Thompson?
Receive and file a letter.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Earnings Tax Department regarding monthly earnings tax report.
To Norwood City Council, attached are the monthly reports for January and February 2019. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Tax Department. Thank you. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Thompson?
Move to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding executive session.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I write to ask that council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, March 26th, 2019, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Thompson?
Move to receive and file the letter, and to go into executive session for the reasons stated within the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will move into executive session, so if you'll turn off the cameras and the audio.
Back. President Lake left. She wasn't feeling well. So we have left to excuse the absent member. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Could you call the roll please?
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sanker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All right, and then our last item is to adjourn. I see Mr. Clark's hand.
Yes, I move to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion?
Well, there's no discussion on adjournment.
Oh, that's true. So, okay, call the roll please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Sanker?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All right, we are adjourned.